It's been a little while, so we're just gonna blanket all of you with swearing in and then we can move on to everything else going.
I Dave Griffin.
I Dave Griffin.
You swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States of America. And of the state of Maine, as long as I shall remain a citizen thereof. So help me God. Okay.
Alright.
Oh my, just need a. Next one in line.
Hi Rebecca Boynton.
Hi Rebecca Boynton, you swear that I will. That I will support the constitutions of the United States of America.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States of America.
And of the state of Maine.
And of the state of Maine.
As long as I shall regain a citizen thereof, so help me God.
As long as I shall remain a citizen thereof, so help me God.
Okay, nope, I do that.
Hi Shannon Snowman.
Hi Hannah Tillman.
Do swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States of America.
Do swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States of America.
And of the state of Maine.
And of the state of Maine.
As long as I shall remain a citizen thereof.
As long as I shall remain a citizen thereof.
So help me God, so help.
Thank you for not cheating. Oh my goodness. Welcome. I think I brought. We know blank one, okay, thank you. But someone that messed it up.
She cheated me. She cheated. I'll fill out after you can. Oh, I did do it right then, it is there, it's not here. Oh. Yeah, I think that's where it's supposed to go, then you have to certify me, right, so that's correct.
Yeah. He's correct or wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, that's okay.
So the reason that we couldn't do all of these minutes previously was because there were certain people that were here and certain people that weren't. So we needed to have the majority for them all, so.
Dave, the only other person that could be.
Well, now we just.
Which I think is you this time.
Dave, first, thank you, sir.
Need to move into.
Dave.
What's that one, Dave?
Thank you.
Ordinance changes. Which will also tie into LD eighteen twenty-nine, so you'll still get snippets of that all the way through. That was my thought, yeah. Do that and then lead into the old business with Tom Bossy and all the other LD eighteen twenty-nine stuff. I can do that. So packets that I had sent out to you guys. We initially, when we spoke last, had talked about changing the mobile vendor ordinance. In the time between then and now, a couple other issues have kind of come up, so I wanted to bring up some other ordinance thoughts. For you guys to take a look at. Um, I did run all of these by legal. So that's kind of where all the other lines and such are through this. But the long and short is um, our, uh, the current RV ordinance. In combination with LD eighteen twenty-nine would essentially allow somebody to get a five thousand square foot parcel. Park their RV on there for an indefinite amount of time and that be the end of it. So I think that we need to kind of fix that up a little. And make it a little more restrictive because the state doesn't actually have anything that says that they can't do that. So if you go to the last few pages of the packet that I gave you, um, there's some email in chain back and forth in there between myself and, what's her name? Yes. With LD eighteen twenty-nine? In certain areas and to certain extent, yes. That's, I was gonna get into that a little bit later. Um, but essentially, if they are on town water and town sewer. Or if they're on town water and have adequate sewer disposal. They can do a five thousand square foot lot and put up to four, potentially five ADU, uh, within ADU. Units, living units. Up to five, from the way that I understand it and interpreted it, and that's why I also invited Erica to join us so that we could talk about that a little bit more. Agreed completely.
Hey, so. America, I'm the land manager planner. So I'm from Abkhaz, um, so I.
I know.
So I work with all of the municipalities in Abkhaz region in various ways, whether it be on ordinance and complaint in some place. So, um, right now, what we as planners and regional councils across the state are doing are trying to come together that we can get some form of guidance document together. To give out to the municipalities describing the required ordinance amendment. So right now, the legislation that we're talking about is going through rulemaking. It's going to officially become law on September twenty-fourth. It'll go through the rulemaking process until probably January. And then the town will be required to update ordinances by July twenty twenty-six to reflect these updates, so. There are a lot of loose ends within this legislation and a lot of it is pretty confusing and, you know, it's a lot of change. Given that, you know, a lot of places were gone from an acre to five thousand square, that's huge, so. There were a lot of conversations going on amongst state agencies, regional councils, et cetera, just to. Figure way out ways that we can clarify the legislation within the rulemaking process. So we're hoping that as we go forward, there'll be a little bit more clarity surrounding a lot of this legislation. I'll certainly have more to speak to on it once, you know, I gather some guidance documents, um, once the state produces that, so. It'll be a little bit over process, it'll be a little while before you're required to change your ordinances. But I do think it's good to think forward about, you know, this will become, it is a lot of changes. Um, another thing that's included, um, in those other legislative changes is that parking minimums are not going to be. Obsolete, taken away in any sense, so a lot of change is affecting land use and. Because of that, we're all gonna work together to see what we can get to recommend assistance for the municipalities. Like you said, it is unfortunately, a lot of this state legislation that's coming forward is superseding the local authority on that side, so it'll be. Perform to what's within there and then be able to work around it, you know, with the town's wishes, so. And I will be here to assist with that up the process.
And just to piggyback on to what Erica just said, Walter, this is kind of pointing more at you and the council. Um, a lot of this stuff ties in heavily with the comprehensive plan. And our comprehensive plan is passed due and quite frankly, very confusing when it comes to what we see for the future of the town.
I'm so happy that this. I have to say, I work with a lot of different, so right now, just for instance, I've just finished Jay's comprehensive and. Ranger Lee's comprehensive plan and I'm working on Kinfield Brewery and, uh, what's that right now, so. I'm in that realm. A lot of what happened with LD two thousand three is for the first time, it gave the growth area that's designated in the comprehensive plan become actually well. So before people do their comprehensive plan, they would identify their growth area where they want to push more development in town and then. Complain will be done, it's on the shelf, we refer to it when we need to, but that's kind of it. Once LD two thousand three came through, that designated growth area is where that extra growth allowed through LD two thousand three. It goes, so the, the growth area is now relevant because the legislation is directly tied to it, whereas before there wasn't. Anything, you know, really pulling it. But what I've seen is that during this time, there are probably twenty-five towns within Abkhaz region that are will be to beat their complaint right now because. There is, wait a minute, these growth areas that we may have chosen, in some places it's in, the last time they did their plan was nineteen ninety-eight, so. We chose those growth areas then, but they are in no way applicable now, so they're now rushing to let's get our complaint updated, et cetera. So, you know, Tom and I have spoken about this a few times now. And yes, obviously, legislation is gonna require that ordinances be changed, but I think really all of this starts with the comp plan. So anything that's within the ordinances truly does come from the comprehensive plan and it has to be, we need what's in there. I'll stop, yeah.
Kind of a hinting, but this only applies to a growth area, growth development or.
So the, the difference with this one being is it's either within that designated growth area. Or has the available public water and sewer or adequate set there. So, you know, a lot of the other municipalities aren't facing as much of, you know. This is coming right at them because a lot of other areas don't have the public water and sewer infrastructure. So you know, in a place like Hartford or Buckfield, this isn't as much of a pressure, but in places like Mechanic Falls. You can see those five thousand square block actually happen. So I do see it coming through here a little bit quicker just because you guys have the infrastructure, um, for good endgame, uh, so we'll just kind of have to go along, you know. That's why I think the comprehensive plan is so important because it takes all of this and scales it back to. What do we want to see in the town in twenty years and how can we change our ordinances, our regulations, the way we review things to reach that goal? So it's kind of like starting back at stage one of, okay, really? How do we want to change our ordinances so that they conform to what we're doing today? And that's where you started off with is the comp plan, so it is an undertaking, but in the same token, it really does help you. Set those priorities and involve the public, those priorities, so as you're talking through these, the issues. People that live here are involved in the process and they know where these decision making pieces are coming from, so. It really is a wholesome process and I think it will help steer future ordinance revisions, help you really drill down on where you want to see future growth in the town go. Um, so, as I said, Tom and I have talked about this a few times and I, I've always number one for, I do think. Complain should be one of the major focuses of the near future so that you can make sure that those, the growth areas you have designated or. You know, appropriate and they align with where you feel growth should go in the town and steer it away from those rural areas, so you don't.
It's growth areas and yeah, public water is gonna be the big thing, cuz that's.
The growth areas are tied around that infrastructure, though in going through your old comprehensive plan, they. It's very confusing as to what they designated as the growth area.
Don't get Dave started. Don't get this.
Tom sent me a message about the designated growth areas and I'll find it right now, I opened it up. Most other plans that have come out of Abkhaz will say, describes the zone and it'll say, this is a designated growth area, it has nothing of that nature in the plan, so really. Reading through each zone and then determining which ones actually allowing more growth than the others, it. It just wasn't as straightforward to me, so I think it could.
We were, we were being guided, so to speak, by somebody from Abkhaz, I won't, I don't remember his name. But I don't think it ever came up. I don't think it ever came up from this gentleman, I mean, I, we were just blundering.
Yeah, and you know what? Happens, but I'm happy to, you know, just bring up the relevance of it, cuz I know, you know, before, a lot of people, why do you want the growth there? Because it really wasn't relevant before the whole LD two thousand three. Came to life, so like I said, there's probably twenty-five towns right now, they're like, we really gotta change this. Hartford actually just unadopted their complaint from two thousand eight because the growth areas that were in there are still, the state is still following that. Even if their complaint is inconsistent and it's outdated, it's still their designated growth area, so they unadopted their complaints, so they will be tied to those growth areas, but. I really think that's, it's gonna be the best starting lot for all of this, and then they'll give you the opportunity to, while you're reviewing these things, say, okay. Do we want to have five thousand square foot lots in this other area that might not have the infrastructure available? Probably not, and then you put that in there and you can further it through the ordinance, so it, it's just good to set the priorities in there and then forward it through other regulations. It's an undertaking, like I said, it usually takes like a year and a half or so, um, but you'll definitely want to set that. You said those changes are going in July and March, September and twenty-one. So, rulemaking will be done in January, the town doesn't have to enforce or change this until. July twenty twenty-six.
So it's July twenty-sixth because we are a council municipality, if we weren't, then it would be July of twenty-seven.
Well, that's why in this time is when regional councils are doing the legwork to, what could we get together to make this whole process easier for the municipalities? Cuz obviously, there are a lot of changes and I want to make sure that I'm as clear and straightforward as I can be. Um, right now, things are still a little bit in limbo, um, you know, we're, we're interpreting as we can, but there are still clues and some left question. Absolutely, yeah, yeah, so all of us as regional councils are. You think, do you guys have a recommendation set, you have some guidance documents? And then just on top of that, I'm on the main association of planners executive board and I've worked on, um, their legislative policy committee, so I have ties to that, that I'll likely get guidance talking from that as well, so. I'll have whatever's available when.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it would be interesting just to even see what it looks like as proposed right now.
Yeah.
Go in and then where the questions are, just to kind of start that for thought process and committing thoughts.
I think that's a great idea, yeah. And honestly, you know, it's funny cuz I was gonna print out a copy of the LD to give you guys, but I, sometimes it's. People don't want to read it until later on, but I absolutely, if you guys want me to, I can send out, or Tom, whatever way it works for you guys.
It's online, I, I read it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so even if you just look up one hundred and thirty-second legislative session, LD eighteen twenty. Yeah, exactly, could be as vague as possible, usually. But yeah, I think, I do think it's really helpful to read it, just to get the basic of the sentiments, there are a lot of different moving pieces with it, um. It's just, you know, going from that five thousand square foot lot size, it's gonna be really, so I know. Everybody right now is kind of like, alright, how are we gonna handle this, we have time to fix the ordinances, but I do think the more we do our homework.
So with that. That would be why I was considering the idea of changing our RV ordinance, because again, there's nothing in the state that says that you can't live in your RV year round. And now with this LD coming along, if they decide to park themselves in any of our designated growth area, which is questionable as to where it is. Or a water sewer area, or even just a water area that they can provide septic for. Now we, now we're gonna have an RV village, and I don't know if we want the town to go in that direction or not. Right, but the, my change for this, um, ordinance is more based around RVs themselves. Not being structurally sound according to MUBAC. So in order for them to maintain that idea of staying in that five thousand square foot lot, they would then need to get, come to me for an occupancy. Which I have certain criteria to me for occupancy. That means that they could park five of them on there, as long as they have adequate septic and, and. They can park up to, well, we'll say four for now, they, they can park four of them on there indefinitely, so long as they have an adequate written thing for where their sewage goes every thirty days. Which is what's already in RV ordinance anyway. So that, that was the proposed change there, um, again, everything that I proposed. Was underneath the CEO recommendation and revision, and everything struck out and written in blue is what Cam, our legal. Suggested I change it to, so. Okay, that's for you guys to.
Came up before and about somebody having an RV on somebody else's lot.
As long as they have written permission.
Okay, so we're not worried about sizer.
In that case, in that case, not necessarily, but again, that's what's changing in this provision, because after a certain amount of time, it would become a permanent structure, which would mean they would have to come to me. To get occupancy for this permanent structure that is now on their property.
Near me, on a nice lot, somebody has put a trailer. Because owner of the property, her sister comes there now and then stays there, their family. I don't know if it's thirty days or three hundred sixty-five days, I'm not that nosy, I just know that there is on this lot. Trailer, where people are living, perhaps another family, they're related. And, uh, and I don't, I don't have a problem with that, I hope the ordinance doesn't have a problem with that.
No, the ordinance wouldn't have a problem with that, cuz it would still keep the, the whole thirty days within a calendar year and all of that, which is what you guys already had there anyway.
Say thirty days.
The first part of K, occupancy for less than thirty days within a calendar year, so, so the actual ordinance that we currently have is this first top one here. So the occupancy is for less than thirty days within a calendar year or two.
So it can't be there all year.
Not technically, but if the occupancy is for more than thirty days, there is an adequate provision for proper disposal of sewage and other wastes associated, yada, yada. So that's so open-ended that they can stay there for the whole year. And then years to come, without any sort of stipulations or anything like that, so long as the property owner gives them permission and they have an adequate way to get rid of their sewage. Great.
Good, that makes sense.
I don't know if you want to go through these all as one and then make a motion on them, if you want to go through them individually, cuz there's RV, then there's the replacement of the noise ordinance. Definition rewrite. Okay.
So it has, and it can be on private land between April first and October first, look at that saying, that's only designed and which it can be occupied. And more than thirty days within that time period.
That is saying that if they exceed past that timeframe, at least this is the way that I was intending for it and kind of the way that I think that I interpret it based on the way he wrote it. If it's after that timeframe, then we're going to look at it more strictly as a permanent structure, because realistically, you're not coming to just vacation for the summer. After or before those months.
When you talk about sewage poppers, uh.
That's when, that's when I would really get involved as far as, okay, do you have adequate sewage, do you have this, do you have that? That was, that was the intention that I was going with.
Well, this is telling me on private land, I can only occupy if April first and October first, as long as I get permission from the landowner. For the occupancy, and then it says can, right? The occupancy is for, um, no more than a total of thirty days within a calendar year, well, first of all, you can't do a calendar year because you're only designated for that time, so really. How I am reading it, it says thirty days within that April first to October first period, any thirty days, so if I did fifteen days in April. Maybe fifteen days in May and I can't spend it in June, July, August, September, October, thirty days within a calendar year, but you.
So that's, that's article I, or one, I should say, sorry. Um, article two says if the occupancy is for more than thirty days, then you have to continue on with the.
Yeah.
With everything else. If occupancy is for more than a total of thirty days within a calendar year, there is adequate provisions for, and then it goes through the list of what the adequate provisions are for. And we can strike that if you'd like, we can absolutely strike that if you'd like, this is, this is you guys' ordinance that I'm just. Because again, those are. Well, those are just generally the vacationing times for campers. Yeah. Okay.
What is?
No time for it. Just a calendar year. So we're just striking that line. Thirty days within the calendar year. However, you guys would want, January to December or, wow. I mean, it's. It wouldn't probably not be a whole lot different than it is now, if I just happen to drive by and see it, or if somebody comes to me and says, hey, that person's been there for three weeks. I mean, I don't travel all the streets of Mechanic Falls every day, all day, doing nothing but looking for RVs, but. I mean. It would just be, a- as far as this is concerned, the ordinance would just be there so that I have something to fall back on in the event that somebody is there for a longer period of time.
So it's gonna be thirty days with a calendar year.
No, that's. Yeah, so did you guys want to go through each individual change that I have recommended? Okay. So if that was the only change for the RV, then. Do you guys want to motion that accordingly, or do you want to just do it all at the end?
I make a motion to approve the.
Right.
Motion, sorry, that was a lot. And who did the second? Thank you.
Alright, the next one I had up was replacing the noise ordinance, uh, with some sort of good neighbor ordinance type of policy. The noise ordinance as it stands right now, uh. Doesn't really have any way of. Maintaining it and actually following through with any of it. There are certain provisions in there that I can't do. Um, chasing down an eighteen wheeler. Chasing down an 18-wheeler that's using their Jake brake, or chasing down somebody who's got loud pipes on their motorcycles, like that, those aren't things that I can do. I didn't want to necessarily adopt the IPMC, because that is such a strict book when it comes to what your neighbors can and can't do in town. So this is kind of a modified version of that, that I kind of kicked over to legal that gave me sort of some cookie cutter stuff. But this came up predominantly because we've had issues with, let's say, out on Route 11, that whole pallet situation, everybody's complained about that. I've had people come to me and specifically have problems with their neighbor having stuff in their yard that really needs to be cleaned up. Well, there's nothing that I can say to enforce them and make that happen. It's not a junkyard, because it doesn't fall under our junkyard policies. So this is kind of a way of keeping homeowners accountable and, you know, cleaning up this, the town a little bit. Uh, replacing the noise ordinance. So. 16516, I think is what he wrote there, but. Chapter 132, property maintenance.
We, we, we talk about this, and I interested, think it's a good idea, about free from weeds in excess of 10 inches. An noxious weed shall be prohibited, I don't know what an noxious weed is.
Something that poison that could cause.
Okay. Also weeds or plant growth in excess of 10 inches is a good idea, and I could, there's some places where you have to enforce that. That's your job. And okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, but again, so.
Is it that normal, um, this kind of weed growth?
So there's been, I've seen a few towns, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting.
Yeah.
I, I know of a few towns that have property maintenance ordinances, one of which is Livermore Falls. I'm not sure if they have regulation on the grass, but you know, 10 inches, I'm saying, I, I mean, it is pretty reasonable and it's, he's the one enforcing it, feels like it's enforceable, that's usually what I take.
And, uh, again, as I, as I was kind of explaining before all of this too, the IPMC has such ridiculously strict regulations when it comes to even things such as grass. I think it's like three and a half inches tall. Yeah, Lewiston has that currently, and their code officers absolutely love it. They think it's the greatest thing on the planet, and generally, when they have to get called out for one of those, they just drag their feet, suck it up and bear it. So I, I'm at least proposing something that I feel like, you know, isn't completely outrageous. But again, it would help the town look better aesthetically. Well, currently it is, absolutely. I, I'm open, I'm, I'm open to suggestions and revisions of this, I mean. And I mean, if that's the case, if somebody comes up to me and claims that that is the case, I mean, yeah. Right.
Oh, I see here.
Well, active management process would be, you know, your, your two haze per season, let's say. Yeah.
Or just needs one definition around what is considered active. And then demonstrated through.
Right, I would, I would, if that were the case, I would be within my rights to say, okay, what are the dates that you do that? And then I would follow up on those dates. Because at this point, I could go to them and say, okay, well, I'll give you seven days to remediate the situation. And if not, then you get your notice of violation. Because your grass is 11 inches tall or something like that around your house. Not that I would necessarily do it, but I'm not going to go out there with a ruler and a measuring tape the whole time, but if things are starting to get a little insane, again, something for me to fall back on.
Seen towns, especially on the way to Sunday River, there's a couple places where the whole yard is a junkyard. You might want to call it a flea market, but it's not, it's a junkyard. And I guess that would not pass muster of years.
And see, that's hard, because if you read the under TV, it's very specific to say that, yeah, the fact that it's solid waste, the part from to, constituent of the waste may have value or other use or maybe silver, it did not include it from the definition of solid. But that could be my life.
So the other, the other piece to this though is that as the authority having jurisdiction, I can make those distinctions in the field. At the end of the day, it's my interpretation of our ordinances. So if I look at something and go, okay, well, that's your livelihood, that's what you're doing. How about we clean up this pile over here? How about we organize it over here? How about we, I can make plans with people in the field in the moment accordingly.
You know, we have someone else, you retire or what?
Yeah, and that's entirely possible, that is something you run into.
How specific can we be?
Right.
You know, you can only have four card bar boxes here.
Well, and the other, the other, the other side of thing.
When it comes to the weed, I, I, I think there's gotta be some standard. But when it comes to, what's, what's the difference between junk and a business? How do you, I mean?
Well, and the other, the, the other thing too is, yes, I'm the HJ, yes, I am the one that I can make decisions in the field, but if I make a decision that somebody doesn't like, they can always appeal to you or the Board of Appeals accordingly, where I can be overturned. So there is a check and a balance there of some sort. Conversely, if I make a decision in the field and you guys catch wind of it and don't like it, you can slap me on the hand. Because I am a steward of you guys. Planning board and the council. So if a councilperson says, oh, you went after Paula Stotts for doing this, and why would you do that? Because that doesn't make any sense at all. Okay. That would then tell me how I am supposed to interpret this better, according to the town.
Yeah, like, I mean, there's, there's a lot of ambiguity in here that I'm seeing on the fact that, like, do we want to do this? Because my perception of what I think someone's property looks like and how it should be maintained and what they have next, might be different from somebody else, right? Like, you know, thinking that, like, I'm looking at this, I'm like, this might not work.
But how specific can we be? That's about it.
Definition is like noxious weed.
Right.
Vine weed is kind of a noxious weed with a common variable, but you could call it a pollen weed, bees love it.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I'm leaning towards the idea of leaving it up to the CEO. If, if things don't work out and there's a complaint, we deal with it. But I, for me to sit here with my piece of property, and having seen what it can look like, Turner had a huge problem.
Turner still does have a huge, Turner still has a huge problem, I live there.
I mean, the guy's going to court, not, I, if my yard is good, looks like a mess, that's my business. I think we need to leave some flexibility in here. The minute we start getting really into the weeds, excuse me, into detail. The minute we get into real detail, any good lawyer could pick it apart if they wanted to. Because what about this? I'm just worried about dying his hands, that's all.
Well, there's like, I, there's certain parts of this that I read that I do like, like, if it's not functioning, for example, if someone's name's broken, it's not functioning, and it's flat, that's one a safety hazard for anybody that's in the area. But also, it doesn't visually look like, look good, and it serves no purpose.
Sure.
Right? So that makes perfect sense. Need to do something like that. Like, maybe a vehicle that could be used for cars that someone's using and part of their business? You know, is it a matter of?
Well, but then there's still provisions in there as far as like vehicles. You're not allowed more than two unregistered, uninspected vehicles. You can still have up to two. So I mean, there, there is still some leeway with everything else that happens within the ordinances.
That kind of solves for a lot of, but, you know, without specifically calling it out in so much detail, and you have.
But there's nothing to, there's nothing that I can fall back on to say, put up a fence and we don't have to do this. And then they just don't put up a fence. But I have no teeth at that point. I have nothing to fall back on to say, okay, well, since you didn't put up the fence, now I'm giving you a violation. Because their, their property doesn't meet the junkyard ordinance, and that's the only thing that I have at this time.
How detailed do we want to be as a, as a board? The more detail you get, the more you leave yourself open to, what this, what about that, what about that? Well, then, then again, it comes down to the, it comes down to the judge and the professional.
Yeah, but then.
Which is appointed by you guys, I just want to say, appointed by the town.
There's going so much jurisdiction that Tom says, you're still gonna be able to revert back to the ordinance because you're failing to comply to your documents. You know, this is kind of like the whole book, and then Tom and Boris would go up to some of the bridge. It's gonna come to that, and when we need, if anybody's holding enforcement officers, and my opinion, as I see it, you're opening yourself up to the town not to lethalize.
And at that point, again, everything that I write a violation for can be brought to Board of Appeals. And the Board of Appeals could agree with you 100% that this person is 100% in the right and I am 100% in the wrong. So then everything gets solved in a civil matter here in town, problem solved.
There is a process.
I mean, th- there is, there is a check and balance to some extent. And I know that a lot more towns, their Board of Appeals are used a lot more often than ours are. And I, I'm not, again, I'm not necessarily going to go out there and just look at everybody's yard and write them violations and tell them they need to do things. But when somebody comes and complains to me about a situation, I have nothing to say, yeah, no, let me go take care of that, let me talk to them about that, let me. Well, and that, that again, that then falls in where the HJ has some sort of leeway, I guess. Where I can at least go out and talk to the person and say, hey, why is your yard like this? Okay, and then I can give them a timeframe, or I can work with them on picking it up. And if they don't comply, then I have a violation to fall back. I'm not necessarily trying to fall back on, legally, you need to get this done, get it done. But I, I don't operate that way. It's just something to have as a tool in my back pocket in the event that they do not wish to comply. Alan is great, don't single him out. Right. Right.
He's not leaving till I leave, right, son? He's my work, son.
If we can figure out a way to point by point by point by point, don't, if we can come up with a way to describe the elements of the bad yard and the elements of the yard that he can walk on by, if we can give him that ammunition, it'll take a while, and he can enforce it, but there's always a loophole.
Yeah, well, and there is, and you're right, there always is. I think we can just think about the town and what we see today and build it to be one, a little bit more clear, in some cases not be as strict, right? I don't think we can accomplish that. Like, I think it's definitely going to require us having more conversation.
Okay.
I'd rather go through the other one, we, junk and, yeah, like weed. Like, I, I just, I don't feel right talking to people about when they should mow and when they should.
And that's, that's 100%, you're right. I am a steward of the town. I just enforce what I am told to.
Fire, it is fire. I think there should be some kind of guidelines, but I, I don't know. Like you had said, like the whole no mo bag. Somebody's grass is gonna get, but I mean, you're not just gonna go out enforcing that unless someone complains.
That's more or less, and, and that's generally, that's even the IPMC. Generally speaking, that is what anybody that follows the IPMC does. They, they don't go out there seeking, they can, absolutely, they can. They don't. Anybody that I have spoken to that has an ordinance like this, they don't, they have enough work on their plate. They don't purposely go out looking with a yardstick to figure out which person is more than two and a half inches high on their grass. So I, could it happen? Absolutely. To Walter's point, it absolutely could happen. You could find somebody after I leave, if I leave, that, yep, that is exactly what they're gonna do.
You do make judgment, I mean, and I, there's this other thing going on, I read in the paper, there's ticks everywhere. And the taller grass, boy, they love it. That, that's no reason to change the ordinance, but I can see, I had somebody with that, that tall grass next to me, it was unsightly when I'm sitting on my porch. I'd ask Tom, Tom can help? Fine, if not, well, you're the porch on the other side of the house. You know, I just.
So are we gonna make a motion to table this and?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to, table the changes for replacing the noise ordinance with a good ordinance. In the interest of time and. Nope. Okay. Ralph Becker, I'm gonna table the changes to the noise ordinance? Yeah.
For lack of time.
What's next?
Uh, definition rewrite of the home occupation. I just want it to be a little bit simpler and cohesive. Because there's a little bit of ambiguity in it, and I just want, I want that specifically to be a little bit more black and white as to what a home occupation is, because there's been arguments about somebody who runs a landscaping business out of their house. Well, are they a home occupation? Because technically, that's their home office? Or are they not a home occupation, because they're not doing their work there?
I'll second that.
And lastly, the whole thing that we came here to talk about, the mobile vendor ordinance. The long and short was the, our, our legal head advised us to kick this all up to council to approve the initial mobile vendor and then every year following to be renewed by myself or the CEO position. That's the, the, in a nutshell version, but there's more to it. I'll let you guys read. That was something that was already stipulated in the ordinance accordingly. So I assume that he just left it in there. If we are, if we are okay with this, if we're okay with, let's say, having an event out here and parking a mobile vendor in our parking lot, I don't see a reason that we can't do that. Personally, as the CEO, as just a normal citizen of any town, I don't see a problem with that. If you want to strike that out, again, these are all revisions that are going to go to the council to make a decision. And if they decide they want to put that back in, that's on them. But
or something, but why couldn't we do that?
The only thing that I could think of as to it would be because this is more of a semi-permanent situation as opposed to an event, which is just a pop-up. Uh, so this would be giving somebody permission to, let's say, bring a hot dog stand here once a week, park it right here in the parking lot of town. I'm not saying you can't. I just, that's, that's the only reason that I would think of that would be an issue. Liability, maybe. That would be the only other thing that I could think of. There, there's a, there's a stipulation in, there's a stipulation in the actual ordinance itself currently that says that they cannot operate on town-owned property. So this is just adding to that as well.
I'd go buy a hot dog at lunch.
Well, it might also just be saying that it can't be issued by anybody until they go in front of planning board.
I, I
Right.
Under A, that gives us a mobile vendor, like, this probably viewed as flawed, but then I'm saying B, mobile vendors may operate on town. And after making sites and approval. So I mean, D, you could probably just strike a high, because being saying you need to have site approval from the board, that evidence, et cetera, that town council is part of their initial application. But then you just brought up a big point like liability, I don't know if there will be some kind of requirement with the tax.
Well, and we could always write up just a basic contract of some sort too, saying that we waive all incidents that might occur due to this coming in. I mean, that'd be a legal standpoint, but I'm sure that something can be written up as such. Sure, it happens all the time. Yeah, and I'm sure we could, yeah, legal fee for contract.
And maybe we're not understanding it in the way in which the current draft has made
Well, he also may not have just liked either my rewrite or the way that it's written currently in the, that in the, so he just rewrote that provision because he assumes that the town wants the provision in there. Yeah, absolutely.
Is based on the Snack Shack down there?
No, I think that'd be a permanent structure of some sort, but I don't know what they sell up. I don't know what they sell out of it, so. That, well, i- if they wanted like a warmer, well, if they wanted like a warmer and all that stuff, then they have to go through the actual licensing of the state to get all of that done, so.
You can rethink this, the mobile event vendor rewrite striking under A, A, I, I. That was the mobile vendor?
Yes.
Thank you for doing that work, Tom.
Absolutely, yeah. Legal, legal did a lot of that though. So back to the old business of Tom Bossy. Um, I did meet with him a month ago, give or take, and he caught wind of this LD 1829 changes. So the question that I posed to you guys after speaking with Erica at the beginning of this is how do you want to proceed with him? So the breakdown for LD 1829, where he currently stands is both water and sewer eligible. If he breaks that acre and a half down into 5,000 square lot parcels, he could put, he could split it up into 12 parcels at four to five units per parcel. Equalling anywhere from 48 to 60 units on that property as it sits. He had proposed to you guys at the beginning, um, two 10 units. LD 1829 does have a provision that would allow him to do the two 10 units. Didn't know what you guys wanted to do about that, what you thought about that. He didn't know either. It's what he brought to me. He can't tear it down until the end of the year. So he's looking towards next year and realistically, since we have to have everything in place, no later than June 30th. 30 days in June. Anyway, no later than that time, realistically, as of July 1, he can put whatever he wants on there so long as it meets the guidelines of the LD. And there's nothing that we can do or say about it. No.
What the guideline is, he could put how many?
We can talk about this later. That, well, that looks attractive, but also at this point in time, if we want to provide some kind of variance under the stipulation that 1829 is going to happen, we can at least kind of control the narrative to an extent. We can give him some sort of conditional permitting. Like, um, he has to do an elderly facility, a 55 plus community. We can put stipulations onto it at this time that we won't be able to come July 1. So if we want to approve this, now would be the time to do so to control what it is that we want, like to avoid an increase in the school or something to that effect.
Calling this affordable housing.
I'm not sure what he is planning. I think he's going with affordable housing currently. July 1, he can do whatever he wants.
Think so too.
July 1, he can just put, July, July 1, he can put whatever he wants and do whatever he wants. I know that there's a situation that was on, what is it, North Main Street? That the person bought the place next to the Chinese food restaurant and I think his intention was to turn those four units into elderly housing or something to that effect. And now he's getting market value because it was never written down. So this would be our, our opportunity to control this situation to an extent for whatever the town wants. Because the state is going to allow it all July 1. Whatever, whatever happens July 1. If we do something before July 1, then he has to follow what our rules are or he can't build it until July 1. So we can still try, I guess, is more or less what I'm saying.
And we've been talking about affordable housing, the state insisted on it. So is there's a pressure on us to make this affordable? Not that there's anything wrong with that, but.
Make his, make his units affordable? Not necessarily, but again, I know that schools were brought up the last time that he spoke because realistically, even if he has two 10 unit buildings, that's 20 units. If he has a kid in each unit, it's 20 extra kids in the school.
Just been talking about affordable housing and how we parse that. So what, are, are we in a place where we need more affordable housing to meet state standards?
I don't believe so.
No, but according to the housing needs production study, it's just there's such an under there's a historic underproduction of housing that is now leaving. So I think according to the state, most places do need more housing. But if you guys wanted to get a little background information on like, you know, affordability wise data, I can do that for you.
I don't know. I mean, we had that discussion for a long time.
It is to me that we can't stop in putting all these units in there, but what we really want to do, rather than making
He, he wants to work with the town on this. So if the town comes to him and says, okay, you can do your 20 units, but we would like it to be a 55 plus community so that we don't have to worry about the schools and we don't have to worry about, you know, the influx of potentially problematic children or something like that, tearing up the town. Then I'm sure that he would be more than happy to apply, uh, to oblige. Well, I mean, I assume that he's not going to just put it up and put it in a dump. Yeah.
And I think he's probably gonna wanna break down if somebody did that.
His plan, his plan, he told me already is to come to you guys sometime around February to discuss his plans. So. I feel like, I feel like giving him, I feel like giving him his two 10 units now is the lesser of two evils. If he decides to parcel it off into 5,000 square foot lots, make four units and then just start selling them off to whoever wants to buy them.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's just food for thought for you guys to think about. I mean, we obviously don't need to make a decision on him. But I, I do know that he is planning on coming sometime early spring with his proposed plan. And it's kind of balls in your court as to how you want to approach it.
Like if he knows now that we're willing to work with him for that, he's probably gonna wanna move on that.
Right, absolutely. Well, he has, he has to wait until January 1 anyway, just because that's when the legal transfer of title is, is in his name. But January 1, he's planning on being there with a dozer to take that, like that whole structure down. So. I, I mean, it might be kind of cold and snowy and such, so he may wait a little bit, but he, he's, he's very eager. He's very eager. He's had a few conversations with me about it. All right. Yes, so Aaron Ulett has expressed interest in becoming an alternate seat for the planning board currently. Um, his application is going in front of council next week. Um, background check came back good. He's all set and squared away that way. So if assuming the council approves him, he will be an alternate seat. So in situations like this where Shannon is absent, he could step in from the that. And technically, everybody's supposed to reappoint after three years anyway, except for Walter, who's gonna be here until he can't be here anymore. Um, but so, yeah, that was just, he was, he expressed interest in it. I had kind of asked him a few times about it. Kind of him and Hod, and then he came back to me and said, well, do you feel that there's conflict of interest? And I said, in the event that there is in a vote, you can just recuse yourself of the vote. Yes. Well, and that's, that's what I said to him too. Said, anything that doesn't necessarily pertain directly to you and your business. So, yeah, no, I think he's, I think he's excited, semi eager. I don't know. We'll see, but. That is all I've got, unless you guys want to talk more LD 1829 with Erica here.
Yeah.
Assuming that council wants to go with AVCOG and to the extent that council wants to go with AVCOG for what it is they want to do with the comprehensive plan, I assume that Erica is going to be our, our contact.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a matter of getting back to me because she ghosts me all the time.
Yes. And I know it's like, all right, so we've been every five minutes today. And then I'd be like, right now, we'll all go back. But you, you know, it's good because I get perspective of so many.
Our alternate code officer is in Norway and he seems to call her and she answers all the time, but.
So here's unlucky, but I like it too. So, motion to adjourn.
Second. I didn't realize you were the chair.
Well.
I want you all to know that I have immunity in the next comprehensive.